Item number three, COVID update. Dr. Kelly. And Director Wieland. And Dr. Johnson.
Good morning, Board of County Commissioners. Susan Wieland, Public Health Director with El Paso County Public Health. I do have members of my team that worked on an extensive presentation for you all today. We have Dr. Kelly, who serves as our medical director with us. Dr. Robin Johnson, who is our medical director. Our Board of Health President, Dr. Cher Bush, as well as Lori Segal, who serves as our county attorney. And I'm sure that we'll have some other partners probably a little bit later. So it's been a little while since we've come before you. Previously, we've had very happy news as it relates to moving forth with variances. We have done a tremendous job with our partners in getting more allowances than were allowed by state public health orders. And so we knew that there was going to be some anticipated increase in disease burden. We did anticipate that. When we were going for the variances, we were in the low threshold at 25 cases per 100,000. And Dr. Kelly is going to get into a lot more data. But where we are today is not such good news as it relates to all of our metrics are trending up. And that is concerning. So we come before you today to make a call to action to everyone, to get on board with prevention measures. I think of it as how wonderful would it be if everyone worked together as individuals and collectively to battle the common enemy, which is the virus? By practicing prevention actions and knowing that our options are limited. Dr. Kelly will provide an extensive presentation focused on science and data and review prevention measures. And we are, again, making a call to action to the public and to individuals and everyone to practice prevention measures. We were doing well before, and we need to get back down to where we were. And Dr. Kelly will go over all of the metrics and give a status check in with that. So we look forward to the dialogue and this presentation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Board of County Commissioners, for allowing us to be here today to update you on where we're doing. It's been a little while since I've been up here giving this talk. Unfortunately, today, much of the topic of conversation is going to be about things that we hoped we wouldn't have to talk about. We worked, all of us collectively, the community, public health, and certainly you all, to help see the successes that we've seen thus far. But we're in a place now where we have to have a little bit of a different conversation. We've talked previously here about movies and about how many of us bond with our families and how that's one of those things that we really miss, to go out and enjoy going to the movies. And it's certainly been a big part, a big thing that I've missed. So, you know, when, like I said, I love the movies. And being the coroner, part of it is I love scary movies. And we, as an office, go out and go watch scary movies with my kids. You know how, every monster movie, there's a scene in the monster movie where the nerdy scientist guy in the town or on the ship or whatever, we've seen the monster eat people and do all these things as the viewer. And finally, somebody figures it out. And they say, "Look," they bring it to their group and they say, "You're not going to believe this, but there's apparently an alien or a monster or some sort of swamp creature that's here." Tells everybody, and this is explaining the problems that they're having. And then there's always like the character who's, you know, like the politician or the company guy who's got some culpability in why the swamp monster is there or whatever. And whether it's the mayor from Jaws or, you know, the curly-headed guy from Mad About You who's in Aliens, who's like, "No, no, no, there's a reasonable explanation for this. Like, don't everybody overreact and, you know, I'm sure we can sort this out." And as the viewer, you're watching it thinking, "Well, surely nobody's this stupid. Like, where do they think half the town went? Like, why are there no cats or dogs? Like, why is the mall empty in the middle of the day?" But of course, to the characters, it seems crazy that this is happening. Fortunately, in every one of these movies, though, there's a former military grizzly guy or, you know, a former sheriff who's like, "You know what? The nerd's right. Like, we need to do something and we need to act now." And of course, because it's a movie, they all get together and they figure out what they're going to do, and then they save the day. Well, this is that moment right now where the nerdy guy is showing up to tell you where we are, to give you the hard-cold facts. And even though sometimes it's difficult to accept for some of us, it doesn't make it any less real and any less critical that now's the time to act. And I've been up here before, and you guys know me, and I'm not an alarmist. And I have an unwavering belief that we can get this done, and I still do. But as I'm going to present today, that's going to require an alteration in our behavior. All right? And so with that, let's get started. Let's start big. Here's the United States. We're at the black line there. And we see early on in April, when we had our first wave of this outbreak, we saw us jump pretty significantly right out of the gate. And we all attributed that to New York, and it was. They struggled mightily with their cases, with their deaths, which was what drove most of that. And then we buckled down. We had some lockdowns. We had different strategies that we deployed. Everybody was on board. We were doing a great job. And we see almost immediately a flattening of that curve and a slow, steady decline throughout the next several months. So we were seeing a lot of success. And our local data will also show this same thing. And then about the middle of June, we ran into some trouble. And as we began to open things back up and people got back out in the world and we said, "Hey, we can do this. We just need to stay disciplined and do a good job." We saw staggering increases in cases in several states around the country. And we'll talk specifically about those. But when we look at and compare where we are with where most of the rest of the world is, we are the global hotspot for COVID-19. And I have from the beginning said, you know, "Everybody's doing the best job they can. This is a difficult situation. This is not the time to point fingers and criticize and all this kind of stuff. It doesn't do us any good. I've always tried to be positive, always tried to be, what things can we do to make this work? But this is ridiculous. This is not even trying." So we'll talk about where this is happening and how that's going to affect us locally. But as a country, we should not be, we should not be in a conversation with Brazil of who's doing better at this. And these are raw numbers. They're not corrected for rates. That picture wouldn't look a whole lot better. But we need, as a country, and we'll get down to the granular level locally, what we need to do about it. But certainly now is the time. And when we talk about states, we're about, you know, New York was a mess, and they've done a good job of turning that around, that whole area in the Northeast. And so when we look at the states that are struggling now, we can see them there. Everyone's kind of putzing along, doing pretty good. And then the middle of June came, and then we have a handful of states that just lit up. And that's Arizona, you know, California, Florida, and Texas. And these are staggering numbers. And in Florida, you have daily COVID-positive rates that eclipse the worst periods of most European countries. And so the numbers almost become laughable. And this is by 100,000 rates. And so we need to do better, and we're going to talk about why that matters to us. And so when we talk about U.S. daily case reports, daily in the U.S., now we're exceeding 60,000 cases a day of positive cases. And we talked this whole time, we've seen now over the course of the last, you know, month or so, these increasing numbers. And the comfort that we got was like, "Hey, hey, hey, the numbers are going up. It's getting more and younger people. That's good, right? That's reassuring." And we haven't seen these increases in hospitalizations or deaths. So we're allowing it to move through the community. The numbers aren't that big of a deal because, as we all know, what we're all about is hospital capacity and preventing fatalities. But we have to understand that, you know, when you get it, you get it today, you don't get sick for five or six days. You don't show up at the hospital for another week. You're now in the hospital for two to three weeks, and then you die. And so there's always going to be this huge lag from when we see cases to when we start seeing hospitalizations and then ultimately deaths. And so for a while, we've been saying, "Look, look, look, we got this under control. I know the numbers are terrible, but we're good on deaths." That's no longer the truth. And so the last week, we have now seen, as we would all predict, from everything we know and see, that the deaths are going to start to creep up, and now they are. And so we're starting to see the ramifications of that. Now, the death rate is much better than what we saw early on. Part of that's because it's happening in younger people. Part of that's because we're getting better at treating those people. And so we have made progress, which is good. But as I've said before, this is all a math problem, right? We know a certain percentage, regardless of age, regardless of health, is going to do poorly. The more people you throw out into the world with it, just given the same rates of hospitalizations and death, those numbers are going to increase. All right? And so it's always been protect the vulnerable, allow the virus to move through, but let it move through at a reasonable rate that that math doesn't get out of control. So last seven days, here's the total case incidence. And, you know, I realize you guys don't, you know, most of the community doesn't live and breathe this every single moment of every single day. But we have public health do, which is good. You shouldn't have to listen to yourself, live your life, and move on. But we're here, that's why we're here, to help let you know what's going on. And for most of us who do this every day, it's not surprising that the sun belt is being responsible for driving most of our cases. And that's what we see here. The red, the darker the red is the worse. And almost the entire Gulf Coast region, Texas, Arizona, and in parts of California. You know, we've described this previously as a wildfire, right? And we want small, little patches of fire that we can easily put out and mitigate. What we can't deal with is a large roaring wildfire that gets out of hand. Well, when we look at the map of the United States, that's what we have. We started with one New York, and now we have three, four, five New Yorks. And what's critical to Colorado is, in the words of the immortal Johnny Cash, "We are surrounded by a burning ring of fire here." Right? We have got Texas, and we've got Arizona, we've got Utah. And we know, anybody who lives in this community for any amount of time knows how many Texans and Arizonians and Californians come here to vacation and visit. And so just like if your house, trying to save your house, and your neighbor's house is on fire on this side, and your other neighbor's house is on fire on the other side, it's really hard to keep those embers off your roof and off your deck to prevent that spread. And that's the situation that we're in now. Okay? We talked early on about, we're all in this together. We're all in this together. And it kind of got turned into almost like a joke, you know, like some sort of silly kumbaya moment, like, "Oh, we're all going to hold hands and get through this together." That's not what that phrase meant. It meant what happens in a little county in Texas that I've never heard of ultimately impacts how we do here locally. We are all in this together, all right? Colorado, El Paso County, we did a wonderful job. Other states did not do a wonderful job. There's no other way to say it. They opened when they shouldn't have. They didn't meet the criteria that the White House set forth. They didn't open when what the CDC said. We did it. We earned it. We got there. We presented that data. We were not one of those people. Other people did, and this is the people who did. And so now we're all going to deal with the consequences of that. Hospital beds, right? That's our number one priority, keeping that capacity. Well, let's take a look at how we're doing. This is from late last night, yesterday's data, ICU beds, occupancy. The dark purple are the states at 70% or more. Those are critical levels of occupancy. Should surprise no one that the states that are doing the most poorly with our viruses are also the states that are seeing the highest rates, the highest occupancy of their beds. We are to the point now where multiple states are having to transport people long distances because their hospitals are full. There's conversations, and I don't know that they've happened yet, about Arizonians being transported to Western Slope, Colorado, because their hospital beds and ICUs are full. And so now we're starting to see the downstream, not starting, we're well into the downstream consequences of out-of-control spread. So what's that? You know, this is all numbers. It means nothing, right? Numbers. What does it mean to us in the real world? Well, 27 states have now paused their reopening plans. They're no longer moving forward. 25 states have now have statewide mask mandates. Oregon, within the last week, rolled back indoor gathering to 10 or fewer. They've excluded faith-based restaurants and gyms currently, but who knows how long that's going to last. California, they re-closed indoor dining, indoor wineries, tasting rooms, movie theaters, family entertainment, zoos, museums, and bars. Those are all the things we fought to get open. Those are all the things we wrote variances for and worked our tails off to get it so that we can get those people back to work, and now they're having to close them. Of the 30 hardest-hit counties in California, California's a big place, right? Closes fitness centers, churches, non-critical stores, personal hair salons, barber shops indoors. That's everything that we have open right now, and they're having to go backwards. New Mexico, our neighbor to the south, who's actually doing pretty good. Indoor seating at restaurants and breweries, they're now down to 50% outside. Texas, I lived in Texas for a year in fellowship. Those people are crazy. They don't listen to anybody. They literally want to be their own country, right? They have now mask mandates, ban on all elective surgeries, and they've closed their bars. Florida, closure of all bars. Louisiana, all bars closed. If you have to close bars in New Orleans, there's a hurricane or something's happening bad, right? Those people love, I love New Orleans. It's one of the greatest cities in America. Now Louisiana's closed. Arizona and Texas now ordering morgue trailers. This was NPR yesterday because they're at capacity. This is what we were talking about doing in March, and here we are again. West Virginia now decreased gatherings to 25, closed all their fairs, festivals, pretty much all gathering events for the rest of the summer. These are all the things that we talked about we do not want to have happen, right? Do not want to get to a place where we have to do this, and yet we're seeing state after state after state having to do it. We don't want that to be Colorado. So let's take a closer look at Colorado itself. Adams, Arapahoe, Denver, all the big metro areas, we're the light blue. We started out, we know we got hit right out of the gate, right? We battled back. We did great. We can see us down there, kind of third from the bottom. We peaked, we came down, we were flat forever. We had a little bit of a peak, went back up a little bit with our case numbers, last 14 days per 100,000. Then we came back down to our lowest level. We were all the way down into low. It's less than 25 cases per 100,000 over a 14-day period. And then late June happened. And you can see every single county is going up. That's expected, right? We're going to see that as we start to open things up. But what is not tolerable is the rate at which we went from third from the bottom to now we're second from the top, and our trajectory is quickly gaining on Denver. And we saw where Denver started, right? This is not the direction we want to be headed as a community. And now we're in a position we have been for the last couple of days in the high level, which is over 100 cases per 100,000 over the 14-day period. We'll get into that a little bit more here. And so here's our total numbers. We started out, you know, with our peak there. We came down, we brought it all the way down to low. That period in May was when we were really working hard on our variances and getting stuff done. We were in great shape. We opened things up. We have a slow increase, which is what we see there over the second half of May, early June, and we plateaued. This is what we wanted to see. We're doing a really good job. We're opening things. People are getting back out, but everyone's being responsible. They're doing the things that they need to do. And then that helped bring all that back down. We're doing a great job. This is exactly where we want to need to be. And then the second half of June came, and then you see what's happened, right? This is not sustainable in any way, shape, or form for any of the things that we talked about. And now we've peaked over the 100, you know, per 100,000 for the two weeks. This is a map showing, a graph showing where our cases are happening. So it's a question, right? Where is this happening? What can we do to put pressure on those specific areas to avoid this? So we're going to take a first look at a breakout by age, and this is over time, and this is one-week totals. And as we get through here, we see our younger population are 0 to 29, which is the blue at the bottom, very low. They're not much involved in this. That was accounting for our hospitalizations early on and some of the deaths, a lot of the deaths that we were having. And then as you see over time, that younger population, 0 to 29, predominantly the 20 to 29, which accounts for about 30-plus percent of our cases at this point, increases. That middle age, the one I'm in, most of us here are in, stays relatively stable throughout the course. And then the more we bring down the older folks, the better we do on our deaths and our hospitalizations. And so that's good. That's a good thing that it's our young people who are the predominant group that's happening. That's what we want to see. But then we go to the second table there at the bottom, and this is by cases. So this includes, the height of the bar is also the number of cases that we see. And you can see that effect by the younger folks, that 20 to 29 in particular, of it increasing over time, being responsible for the largest increase. That orange group, that middle group, is increasing a little bit too here lately. The green group, the older folks, the ones that are most at risk, those people are doing an amazing job. Like, they're following the guidance, they're wearing the masks, they're doing all the things they want and that we want them to do. They're carrying the load here, the older folks. So this is not on them. This is on those other two groups. Now, it's easy at this point to say, "Well, you know, young whippersnappers don't listen to us. They don't do what we're supposed to do, and they're out partying, and, you know, they're doing all this stuff where they're going to, you know, the protests or their college parties or, you know, hanging out or doing all..." And there's a little bit of that, youth being youth and thinking they're invincible. But that's not what's driving the majority of this. But you've got to understand that age group is also the group that is the one that has all of the service industry jobs. They're delivering the pizza. They're the working at the restaurant. They're the ones that are out there in the streets, face-to-face with individuals. They're the ones that don't have jobs that many of the rest of us do that allows them to work from home and do meetings. They're our frontline grocery store workers and all those kinds of things. And so they're put into harm's way all day, every day. And so that's a large part, and that's what we see. A lot of these, and our young people, are not them being irresponsible. It's they have to work jobs that puts them out there in the community, face-to-face with other people. Which is why it's in many ways on the rest of us to make sure we're doing what we're supposed to do so we don't get it, so we don't pass it on to those people who don't have some of the luxuries that people in other age groups, other economic groups have. These are hospitalizations. Once again, the top line is just breaking out by ages, and we can see it there, and it changes over time. But you also got to look that just because you're in that 0 to 29 doesn't mean you don't end up in the hospital. So just because you're in those young age groups doesn't mean you're guaranteed to do well. You're less likely to do poorly, but the more people we throw on that fire, the more likely it is going to be significant. And then when we look at the bottom, hospitalization trends, we saw that huge spike early on, understandable. We get control of it, everything comes down, and for basically two months, two-plus months, we stay flat, plateau. Great. That's what we're looking for. Super successful. And then over the last three weeks, completely in response to those increasing case numbers, our hospitalizations are going up. We also understand this is the admission cases. So this is the week that they got admitted. Many of these people stay in the hospital for several weeks, sometimes several months. And so it's kind of an accumulative effect. It just continues to ratchet up. We know from modeling and from our local hospitals that two hospitalizations a day, two admissions a day is about all they can tolerate before they start to creep up relatively rapidly. And they've reached out to us within the last 24 hours, UC Health, to let us know that they're in a position, I'll get to it a little bit later, where they're seeing that ratcheting up, which obviously is illustrated here. And then deaths. You know, death is a big part of it. Death is the least useful metric that we have to decide how we're doing. By the time we're seeing increased deaths, you know, it's too late to do anything about it, obviously, for the majority of those people that are involved in the situation. And so it should surprise no one also that the vast majority are cases that are in that older age group. That's what drives the deaths. And really, for the last probably two months, nearly all of our deaths have occurred in long-term care facilities. Very little in people that got the virus out in the community, which is a good thing. I went weeks without having a single death certificate come across my desk that wasn't in a long-term care facility. And that's changed the last few days. I think we've had four community-based deaths in the last couple of days. And so that trend also is no longer providing us much comfort. And you see here at the very tail end, last week, we saw a significant increase in our deaths after having a long period of doing well. That one that you see, 13, that was essentially entirely limited to a long-term care facility that was seeing numerous, numerous deaths because of an outbreak. And so the trend even in deaths finally has gotten here. So let's look at overtime, cases per 100,000 for 14 days. The TPHD goal for good control is 25 cases per 100,000 per 14 days. All right? That's what we're shooting for. And that's where we were when we submitted all of our variances. And so that's how we got approved. And then we see how over time, obviously, we now we're above that. Now, one of the big questions is, well, are the number of cases that we're seeing just being driven by the fact that we're just testing more people, right? We test more people, you find more people, right? And that's true. There's an element, certainly, of truth to that. And the way we figure that out is by looking at the positivity rate. Like, of all the tests we're doing, how many of them are positive? Now, if the increasing raw number is due 100% due to more testing, then the rate should stay the same. If it's always 5%, you test more people, you have more people, but the rate. Where we get into the problem is if the number of people that you're testing, a higher proportion of them are now testing positive, indicates that there's more virus in the community, which is why it's one of the sort of the great equalizers of metrics. And so what we see here is, over time, since that late June, we have seen steady increases in the percentage of cases that are positive that we're doing. 5% is kind of the global sort of accepted number for ideal. If you're doing less than 5, you're like a superstar, and that's where you kind of want to stay. And we've exceeded that, and now we're up towards essentially 7%. Now, there are places in Arizona statewide that are like 25% of their cases are positive. And so certainly, you don't want to wait till you get to 25% positive and go, "Hey, maybe we got a problem here," right? And so we're using a very low threshold as a, you know, check the engine light. "Hey, we might have a problem here. Let's take a look and see what's going on." The middle bar of the graph there is tests per 100,000 over 14 days. This is a good number. We want this number to go up over time because it's telling you you're adequately testing in your community. Now, there's been some suggestion that, "Well, if we just stop testing people, then, you know, our numbers would go down. It'd be awesome." That's not how it works. Because I can show you what happens when you don't test anybody, because then the only people you test are the people that show up at the hospital really, really, really sick. And then if we go back and look at April for us, we have like positive rates of 25% because we're only testing the sickest of the sick. Ideally, what you want to do is test as many people as possible with the most minimal of symptoms. And when you do that, the vast majority of those people don't have it. It helps dilute that number. It shows that you're doing a good job in testing and getting to people quickly, but it lowers that number. So that's really how you fix that problem, either getting less virus in the community or getting better at testing more people because you'll pick up more people that aren't positive.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question.
Yeah. Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. So I think that one of these charts is number six or seven on the dashboard on your page. Is it the bottom line, the one that we want to keep under?
Yes.
Point 05?
Yeah. And I think I have another table showing it's 5%, point 05 is the number that we want to stay under. That's the number that we got our variances approved under, which is our goal. Now, it's not 5%, and then, you know, all heck breaks loose. There's other metrics, 5, and then 10, and then 15. And then there's other things that we take into account. But yes, you're correct. That's the magic number that we're, our goal that we're shooting for.
And this might be discussed later, but we have to remain under the point 05 to apply for more variances.
We would have to, yes. I mean, at this point, the variance process is a little more than applying to be in Protect Your Neighbor, which is the next big phase. And so it's modified. We don't have to pick and choose anymore. We say, "Hey, if we meet these metrics, we move on to Protect Your Neighbor," which opens up all of these other things as well as increasing capacity. But that is the number that you're shooting for to be able to apply for that variance, which is really a Protect Your Neighbor kind of package that you're looking at.
Thank you.
Yeah. And then at the bottom is our hospital admissions, and we saw early on, you know, that's that magic two number. You could do more than two, it's bad. You do less than two, it's good. And so we saw early on, obviously, much more than two. And now, over the last, you know, early month, two to three weeks, we've seen significant increases in our hospitalizations. So we're trending in the wrong direction there. And then here's our, this is the main picture that's on the dashboard, which illustrates it a little bit better. And you can see, here are our cases. The negatives are the blues. The positives are the oranges. And then that line graph is the test positivity rate. And you can see there's going to be some natural up and down. So we're not worried about a couple of days of it going up because invariably it comes back down. But we see there, as we've trended towards the last month, it's clearly a steady increase. It's got some variability in there, but if you drew a line through that, it's going up. And over the last couple of weeks, we're really at about, we're really at 7%, which is above that 5% where we want to be. So the state has set out what the recommendations are, what metrics you have to meet, and whatever range you're in, you have to, what your capacities are going to be. So if you're in the low and you're doing great, less than 5% of that number. You get indoor capacities of 175 and outdoor of 250, which is essentially where we are now. That's where we got approved. Medium, if you're in the medium range, that's between 5 and 10%. That's where we are now currently. You get indoor capacity of 100 and outdoor of 175. If you shoot up into the high range, which is more than 15%, you get ratcheted down to 50 or 125. We're not to 15%, but we're certainly headed well towards, well towards the 10%. And unless we change things, obviously, it's going to keep going up. So variances, just to recap quickly, what variances have we got? High school graduations, restaurants, which were in increased capacities at those, places of worship in the Cheyenne Mountain Zoo, and then the big one, the multi-sector one that we all worked on very, very hard, which affected vast sectors of our economy, of our local economy. So these are the things that we're worried about being in danger if we don't turn things around. What these variances did were allowed us much more local flexibility and increased capacity, which every customer in the door is more money that you're making, right? More people that get to go out and enjoy each other's company and enjoy the life that they're living.
they're, that they're living. It is a great driver, obviously, of our local economic stability as well as, as the joy of the civic life that we all get to, get to lead, all while still controlling the virus, if you do this well. So here's how the process works, and we've been sorting this out over the course of the week. Once we breached the threshold, it was on July 8th, and so we were monitoring this and following it along, we immediately self-reported to the state public health department, hey, this has happened, we know it, we're working on it. That gives us some time to submit a mitigation plan, basically saying, what are we going to do about it? Like, how are we going to fix this? And we submitted that plan, worked all the second half of last week and through the weekend to get that plan ready to go and submitted it yesterday. That starts the time ticking. We have two weeks to show progress, show stabilization, show that we're doing a good job, show that we're actually following through on the things that we said we were going to do. And then in two weeks, we'll meet again with CDPE. Obviously, they're going to be monitoring, we're going to be monitoring it. We'll meet with them and we'll say, hey, how are we doing? You know, any ideas, any suggestions? Is this working? Have we started to change trends? Keep doing it more? Are there any other things that we could put in place to be more effective here? At that point, there's the possibility of those first two weeks that if we haven't met, if we haven't shown some progress, or let's say we're not really doing the things we said we were going to do, that we may be put at whatever trigger lever we, whatever range we're in, that's where the capacity is going to be set, the slide that I just showed you before this. That gets us two more weeks. Let's see if these new measures work. Let's see if we just keep doing this, how, how's it come out? If after those two weeks, we have not seen progress, we have steadily increasing numbers, things are skyrocketing, our hospitals are full, any of this kind of stuff happening, at that point, there'll, there'll likely be a conversation, an uncomfortable conversation about us losing our variances or them being reset in some way that is outside what we had originally asked for. And so this is, this is, as I said, as we started, this is a call to action. This is though, this is the warning light that says we, as a community, need to change our behavior. It's really what it comes down to, changing individual behavior and increasing that personal responsibility of what each of us is doing to help the collective move forward. And so here's where we are currently with, with our capacities. These are the things that we talked about early on. These are the things that are in the White House Coronavirus Task Force. These are the things that everybody agrees are the things you need to have done and ready to go to open and to be successful. COVID-19 trends, how are we doing? Are we going up, are we going down? We steady. It's very clear that we are going up, right? So that's, we're not doing good there. Our contact tracing capacity, that was a big one early on. We were one of the few counties in the state who throughout all of this, were able to maintain our contact tracing, to investigate those cases, to get that critical information, to help get in front of that virus, and to do the things we need to do. We never give up on it, right? Worked around the clock. That's not the case now. So in the last few days, last week, because of surging cases, we have handed over much of the day-to-day case investigation to the state public health department. And what we are currently doing in our Epi department is training staff. We brought a lot of new people on to build that capacity. We've been working hard with our, with our businesses and our schools to try to get us plans in place to help prevent some of this. So we've been kind of working in-house to get us into a better place where we're ready to go because clearly we're in this for the long haul. And so at some point, hopefully, at least at the end of July, we'll be able to take those case investigations back on. But as of now, we aren't able to do that. So we've, we've checked that box. Testing capacity and turnaround times. Early on, we all know the stories with testing and how difficult it was and the domino effects to, to our treatment, to our investigations, to what, to our PPE. And we've done really well. UC Health has been spectacular in the community, but even their cases are increasing, their turnaround times are increasing from what was sometimes less than a day and now up to two to three days. The state lab is now reaching maximum capacity, and so they're sending a lot of their overflow to private labs, and so that's obviously challenging. The biggest issue is that the private labs that some of our hospitals use, that now CDPE is using, these are regional labs. So they're getting samples from all over the country. And when Texas and Florida and Arizona are sending tens of thousands of tests to them per day or a week, their turnaround times falter. And so now, some of the private labs that had gotten down to, you know, three to four days are now up to seven and 10 days. So in some ways, we're all the way back with our capacities to where we started. And then lastly, the biggest piece of this, right? What we've all talked about is our hospital capacities and what we need to protect. UC Health notified us collectively, us as well as I believe you all, last night or early this morning, that current trajectories are putting a strain on their ability to treat patients and that with everything as it is, if it were to stay the same, the current trajectory, that within two weeks, they would be at a capacity situation where they may have to stop doing elective surgeries, or they don't feel that they would be able to take on the risk of continuing with many of these variances. And so that's sort of the line in the sand that I think all of us have drawn of when the hospitals tell us they're in trouble, we need to listen. And they're not in trouble today. They're not in trouble today. But if we do not change, is what they're telling us, where we're headed, then they could be in trouble in the near future. Commissioner Gonzalez?
Well, I was going to ask.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So what is the ICU capacity or hospital rate capacity at this time?
You mean like the census?
Well, I mean, there's, there's a statement here. So, and you mentioned it earlier, so that's a relevant line, a bit of information. So what is the capacity? Are we at capacity? It sounds like.
Oh, okay, yeah. So, so the, I mean, a couple of things. One, we have our own hospital, but that, every hospital is part of a system. And so capacity isn't just the number of beds. It's the number of ventilators, it's the number of doctors, it's the number of nurses. It's not only influenced by COVID, by all the other things that are going on. So it's always a fluid number. You can convert one type of room to a different type of room. So I can't give you, and I don't know that even hospitals can necessarily give you right this moment what their number is. We have been told that generally, it's around 126 or so COVID patients that they can take on. We are.
And that's in the inner system?
That's, that would be, I believe, in El Paso County. And so, but that number would be affected by, by other places. And I believe they have information today. I think as of yesterday, they had like 39 patients. There's a bunch that they're waiting on, like 10 or so that they're waiting on tests, which could bump that up. As I said, they're not at capacity now. They could, if you showed up today, they can treat you. If you showed up tomorrow, they can treat you. What they're telling us, what, what the, what the CEO of UC Health is telling us is that if we continue on this current trend, their burn rate is two weeks. At the end of two weeks, they could be at a point where they are at capacity. We clearly do not want to wait until the hospitals are at capacity to decide collectively as a community, we're going to do something about it. We just can't do that. And so now is our opportunity to alter that trajectory so that we don't get to that point. You good? Okay. So here's the thing. So we got to tell people what to do. We got to help people figure out what to do, right? We got to, I can't come here and complain and say, oh, this is a disaster, without giving some sort of direction to our citizens. And so one of the ways that we're going to do that is by, is by clearly saying what issue, what things are high risk? Where are the places that we're seeing cases? These are the areas that are, are you at most risk of getting COVID? These are the areas that you're either going to want to avoid, or if it's something that's important to you, we need to be super, super diligent about doing those simple things that we know work. Okay, so our high-risk activities, air travel, public transportation, bars and nightclubs, some of these things aren't even open here because they're at such high risk. We didn't open them. We collectively didn't open them because we knew they're high risk. Other states did, and oh my gosh, I'm completely shocked to discover that Miami nightclubs are a hotbed for COVID. Like that, what did you think was going to happen? And so now we see that those states are suffering those consequences, right? Medium-high-risk exercises at gyms, hair, nail salons, et cetera. Obviously, hair and nail salons are not a priority for me, but they are for my spouse. And so if she wants to go to a hair and nail salon, great. But she's going to go to one that's reputable, she's going to go to one that follows the rules, she's going to wear her mask, she's going to thank them for doing it the right way. She's not going to go and complain and yell at them and openly criticize them and harass them because they're trying to protect their job and their employees and you. That's why they're doing those things. So if she wants to do that, great, we're going to be smart about it, right? Then we go down, outdoor restaurant dining. I try to eat outdoors as much as I can to support our businesses and enjoy our weather. Low risks, grocery and retail shopping, there are things we have to do, right? So when we do those things, we're going to be smart. We're going to wash our hands, we're going to wear our masks, we're going to do all those things. And then try to prioritize those low-risk activities and those low to medium-risk activities. Spend the majority of your time doing that. If you have something that you want to do, you love to exercise at a gym, that's your social network, it's good for your mental health, awesome. Do it. Be smart. But then maybe ratchet back some of the other things that might be a little bit more risky so we can kind of equal that out. This is like when you go to a restaurant and you're like, I'm starving, and you look at the board and you're like, oh, I'd love a cheeseburger. And you're looking, you're like, oh my God, a cheeseburger is 1,200 calories. Well, the chicken sandwich is like 500 calories. Do I like this burger 1,200, like that many, 1,200 calories worth? It allows the consumer, the citizen, to make their own decisions that are informed. So we, we got to get back to the fundamentals, right? We got to, we got to all agree on what is happening so that we can take appropriate action. Here is what we know. These are the indisputable facts of COVID. The infection is predominantly spread through respiratory droplets that leave the mouth and nose of an infected person and travel to others, infecting their mucosa of their mouth, nose, lungs, or eyes. That's how it happens. That's how you get infected. Everything that we do needs to keep that in mind. Surface contamination, I got it, I put something down, you touch that same thing, you rub your eyes in your mouth. That also can transfer it. It's thought to be a much smaller role in this. It's not the main driver. And then aerosolization, that's a big topic that's come up the last week or so. The United States, including myself and our local public health department, believe that at least some component of this is aerosolization, which means small little droplets that you breathe out that can hang in the air for periods of time or at least can get carried around. Because we have outbreaks, situations where people are sitting well more than six feet away, they don't ever have close contact, and based on air movement, we can see the virus spread and infect people kind of downstream. Other parts, the World Health Organization is still a little bit iffy on that. What you need to understand about the WHO is the WHO is the most conservative scientific organization in the world, right? You think it's hard to convince the five of you to do something, try to convince 10,000 scientists from 150 different countries to agree on the same thing. They'll, they'll probably announce a working group next week to, to write a position paper on whether the Earth is flat or round, right? This is how long it takes them to move. So they're always going to be behind the curve because they have to have a huge consensus. We in America and the CDC believe that this is probably playing a, a role, so we have to take that into account. Most of those infected do well, although serious illness and death has occurred in all ages. Those who are older or have other comorbidities are at increased risk of getting very sick and dying. From contact to symptoms is about five to six days, but this is the key piece. We know that people in the 48 hours before developing symptoms, when they feel 100% fine, are infectious. Every single one of us in this room right now feels great. You should, or you shouldn't be here if you don't, you should feel great. Every single one of us could be infectious right now. We don't know because tomorrow, we may wake up feeling bad, which is how some of these, this is where all the other things, all the mitigation efforts we're putting in place, why they're so important. Some people never develop symptoms, but they are still infectious during the course of their, of their infection. And so we have to keep that into account as we come up with what we're going to do about it. That's what we know, okay? It seems silly that I have to address some of this. But we live in a world where, like, I love conspiracy theories as much as the next guy. My ringtone is literally the theme song from X-Files, okay? I love it. It's hilarious. I think it's fun. It's not fun when it puts people's lives in danger. And so we spend an exorbitant amount, my, my personal time, I spend an exorbitant amount of time dismissing and dealing with sometimes legitimate questions, but a lot of times just lunacy that shouldn't even, that shouldn't even get beyond the most basic levels of fundamental critical thinking. Yes, two days ago, I saw a report on NPR, I was listening, and they did a survey, 70% of Americans have heard the myth that somehow Bill Gates and microchips implanted in your body and 5G towers are somehow tracking all of us. 70% of Americans heard this. 30% of Americans think there's some credence to it, which is funny. It's like a Rude Goldberg version of a conspiracy theory that should be easily dismissed right out of hand, and yet it's not, which is funny, until in the UK, people started burning down 5G towers. Like imagine that, during a pandemic, you're burning down communication towers because of something you read on the internet. I saw a great story where someone took to dispute this, they took all the pandemics, because that's the argument, every time a new G comes out, a new pandemic happens. Well, this author took it and said, okay, I'm going to take all the pandemics, and I'm going to line them up with all the major events of Justin Timberlake's career, from when he formed N'Sync, to when they broke up and he went solo, to when he got married. And you can make Justin Timberlake's career line up with pandemics. Apparently, it's his fault. This is a Chinese biological weapon, or it escaped from a lab. Amazing movie plot, amazing. But when we, when we genetically engineer things, we have, we have the ability to do that, but when we do it, we have sequences that we have to use on either end of the, of the DNA, and then we take it and we insert it into things. And we, we see the tool marks left behind when we do that. That's the way all genetic engineering works. And we have the entire coronavirus genome mapped, and none of those markers are in there. So unless someone figured out for the first time in history how to do this without leaving marks on it, that's not true. The funny thing is, is that in China, they think we engineered it and sent it to them. That would make either one of us the stupidest countries on earth, because if you're going to do that, you might want to come up with a vaccine first for the biological weapon you've released. Not saying we're incapable of something that's stupid, but it seems unlikely. You're making all of this up, and this one I find personally offensive, because it means if we're making all of this up, I didn't get invited to the Zoom call where all the doctors and nurses and public health officials in the world decided we were going to, we were going to prank everybody. That was apparently the only one they left out. This is another one, you are inflating deaths, cases, hospitalizations. That is also offensive because as the person who's actually in charge of figuring out why people are dead, I would have to be part of this conspiracy. Here's what happens when people die of this. They're almost all in the hospital. They die. They then, the death is reported, obviously, to the state public health department. The state public health department reports it to the local public health department. At the same time, the doctors and nurses call my office and tell me that the person has died. At that point, if we hadn't already done it, we investigate the case by talking to the doctors, the nurses, the family, the friends, anybody who's involved, okay? My office turns around and says, okay, let me call. We call, we talk to the doctors, the nurses, the family, anybody involved. We talk to each other, coroner, public health, hey, do you know about this death? Yeah, we know about this death. Yeah, we know about this death, what do you got? Here's what we got, okay? Then what happens is, I wait for the death certificate to come, which is filled out by the doctor who cared for them. That's the only person who can legally sign that death certificate, me or the doctor. I review the death certificate, what does it say about COVID? Oh, respiratory arrest, died of COVID. We find out what the labs show, lab confirmed, or was it suspected or probable? We then meet again. If there's any discrepancy between any of this, me, an epidemiologist, and two public health nurses, they go through all the medical records, public health goes through the laboratory studies, I go through the death certificate, and we have a meeting where we talk about it, where we come to a consensus of whether we think it is or it isn't. So if these numbers are lies, the doctors, the nurses, the families, the hospital administrators, vital statistics, the state public health department, the local public health department, the coroner, the medical examiner, and all the death investigators, all have to be lying about this. Cases.
Can we, I want to talk about deaths for just a second. I'm, I'm with you, up to a certain point here. You know, one of the things that I, we apparently reclassified 11 deaths in El Paso County as non-COVID related. I mean, could you understand why maybe people would see that as, you know, initially some sort of inflation, and then, you know, okay, now we, we figure we've got it right in some way? I think the other thing I hear when it comes to deaths is, you know, we have people that are, you know, have other very serious conditions that end up with COVID, die of the serious condition, and then have the classification of the death as COVID-related. I mean, I, I agree with you, the microchip stuff, absolutely, that these are biological weapons, this is, you know, but, but it does seem to me that you can at least find some legitimacy in some of the complaints people have when we're reclassifying, which is a good thing, we need to be doing that. And, and also, when, you know, you have somebody that's 95 years old and, you know, passes away and then has their death classified as COVID, can you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah. So to start, every single conspiracy theory starts with a grain of truth. And so, yes, the process that I just described about reviewing the deaths, that's the review process that we go through. And so what the state public health department says is, every one of those deaths was a long-term care facility that, that I and public health reclassified as non-COVID related. What happens is, if you're in a long-term care facility and there's an outbreak in that facility, we know there are COVID patients in there. If someone has a rapid decline with symptoms that are consistent with COVID, or they have other symptoms that show up that are consistent with COVID, they get flagged as probable in that particular scenario. That's how they got included on that original list. They have had contact, they've had exposure, but they, and then they declined and died. And so what we did was, that, that flags them, they go in that original pot of people, right? And so that gets what that number is. And so then what we do is we take that number and then we audit it for all the reasons that I just said, and we go through everything, and we say, okay, in this particular case, yeah, they had shortness of breath, yeah, they were on a COVID ward, but they've also got chronic COPD, that could easily have explained those symptoms that they had. And so are we, is it more likely than not, that's the threshold, that's the legal threshold for determining cause of death, are they more likely than not to have died of this? 51% versus 49%. Our medical opinion of the doctor and/or me is that I can explain all of these symptoms without having COVID. Did they have a COVID positive test? No. Some of them, they may have even had a COVID negative test, but in that setting, just because they have a negative today doesn't mean they didn't get it tomorrow. So we would have to do basically daily COVID tests to rule out the fact that they didn't have it. But when you use reasonable medical logic, you can say, yeah, that one's suspicious, but I'm, I'm more, I'm more certain that they died of the complications of their COPD, let's take that out of there, so that we're being completely academically honest, because we can't be certain, we can't be sure above 50%, which is how we do all diseases, and then we're not going to include it. So that's how those numbers got decreased. The very thing that people are accusing us of not doing is the very thing that we did, but that's how, that's how all these sort of screening things work, there are multiple checks and balances along the way. As far as the part about the 90-year-old, that's, that's how deaths are certified. So if you have a 90-year-old and they are at their nursing home, and they've got a million medical problems, and they fall out of the bed and they break their hip, okay? They could have been very, very sick already, could have been on death's door, but, but for the fall and hip fracture, they wouldn't have died at the time and the place that they did. And that's what I use to drive cause and manner, and that's consistent across the board for every disease, for every injury, okay? And that's the same as for COVID. So, yeah, they're 90, I also, 90-year-olds that are in great shape, right? We have 90-year-olds that are in terrible shape and they're in long-term care facilities. And if they get COVID, they're the most susceptible. And so the, the argument is, would they have died at the time and the place that they did if not for the infection? And anybody who's being reasonable would say, no, it at least contributed to some degree. If it contributes to any degree at all, suddenly they've got a fever, they've got shaking chills, they've got shortness of breath, they've got all these things that they didn't have, then it's a part of the picture. That is consistent with every other infectious disease that we have. So if they had all those same problems and they got influenza, influenza B, I would put complications of influenza B, and then I'd say, oh, they also had all of these other medical problems. That's, that's not only appropriate, that's how it's been done for hundreds of years. So there's nothing new about that, but I mean, it's, people don't understand that. I mean, I've got lawyers and defense attorneys, prosecutors, judges that don't understand that just because you murdered a 90-year-old doesn't mean you didn't murder him. You still played a role in, in the death.
Sure, I, I guess the only thing I was pointing out there is, you know, out of all of these, that one has, I don't necessarily want to say legitimacy associated with it, because I, you know, appreciate reclassifying, but, you know, I can see where people would go where they do on that particular point.
There was a, there was a problem early on with the state public health department, how they were listing deaths, and not breaking out those that were obviously, that were COVID confirmed, positive, this is why they died, versus people who had a positive test and then ultimately died. They weren't distinguishing between those, they had both of those numbers, but they weren't coming out and saying, hey, this is what these two categories mean. And poor communication is always a driver of some of this misunderstanding, no doubt. That's why I'm here to talk about these things, because it's easy to be like, hmm, that seems weird, and until you explain it, and they're like, oh, okay, right? And so, as I said, all of these have some grain of truth. Cases, this is a big one, Commissioner Gonzalez was asking us about it, there's been a lot of statements that, oh, you've got all, you're saying probable, you've got these probable, you're including all these in here, you're inflating the numbers. Here's how that works. If you are sick and you go and you get tested and it's positive, you just go home, right? We're gonna call you, public health, and we're gonna talk to you, and we're gonna say, how you doing? You know, what, what's been going on? Can you help us maybe figure out where you got it? They're gonna, we're gonna walk through that, and then we're gonna say, okay, where, where you been? Like, who's at risk because you've been sick? Where you've been in the 48 hours or so before you got sick and then after? And they're gonna say, well, I, I've mostly been home, you know, I did this, I did that. And they say, okay, well, you been home, does anybody live with you? Oh, yeah, my wife lives with me and my three kids. Okay, how are they doing? Well, about three days after I got sick, my wife got really sick, same symptoms, yeah, she had a cough, cold, fever, all the same things I had. And we're gonna say, okay, did you call your doctor? No, you know, we didn't call her, we did call and they said, yeah, you definitely got it, that's what you got, stay home, here's the rules, and they stay home. And we're gonna say, okay, well, you, you have it, we know, laboratory confirmed, your spouse very, very, very likely has it. It would be incredible coincidence that you have it, she has it, and then you have to be a moron of a physician and go, gee, I can't imagine what's wrong with her, what a, what a crazy thing, right? And so they're gonna count as a probable. But what you have to understand is, that's a minuscule fraction of the overall cases. I think in Colorado, that's about 5% of the total cases. The irony of that is, is the better job you do at your contact tracing, the more calls of those you make, the more you follow up with people, you're gonna have more of those probabilities because you're actually doing your job. That's what you're supposed to be doing. That's still gonna be a minuscule fraction of the overall cases that we're seeing. You cannot look at that and go, well, that's probable, I'm gonna discount all those. Why would you discount them? That's what medicine is. We listen to your story, you tell us your symptoms, and we make our best guess at your diagnosis, right? And so that's completely appropriate to do. Now, Commissioner Gonzalez asked a question about, well, what if those people don't get tested, well, they stay probable. What if they do go get tested? Well, if they do go get tested, I'll have to follow up, and it's, let's say it's negative, will we subtract those out? No, because we don't know all the negative tests, we don't correspond to those because we're not contact tracing those. So is it theoretical, is it possible that there's one or two people out there that did that? Yeah, that's possible, but we're talking about thousands of cases, and we're talking about one or two people, that is not gonna in any way significantly impact. Now, if they called us and said, hey, I was negative, I guess I could ask the epidemiologist if we would take that one out, it would be a lot of work for no real value. But also, a negative test on that day, once again, doesn't mean that it's not 100% perfect, okay? And so, yeah, there may be a one or two or three or five cases that we've counted that aren't it. But remember, every single study we've ever done shows that the number of people you've identified is a tiny fraction of the actual number of people that have it out there. Anywhere from, you're only identifying 10% up to maybe, you know, 50%. And so when you're talking about one or two people in a setting of knowing that 100 people, if we say 100 people have it, that probably means close to 1,000, could mean 1,000 people actually have it, and we just haven't identified those people. This is not a significant number, it's not gonna alter in any way, shape, or form the overall picture. What this feels like a little bit, if I'm gonna be honest, is when you're on a team, and you started out great, and you had a big lead, and the other team caught up, you got sloppy, you got lazy, showboating a little bit, and then you go into the locker room at halftime, and we're like, what in the world happened? We have this thing. And then you're gonna have those few teammates who start complaining about their cleats, or the thickness of their jersey, or the ref who doesn't like them, instead of saying, whoa, 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 the score's the score, man. We can argue about it, we can say that shouldn't be the score, but it doesn't change the place that we're in, right? It doesn't change the fact that we need to pull it together here to do something about it. And so, yeah, we're, we're building a airplane as we're flying, so there's gonna be places where the math is gonna be like, ah, we're gonna need to take that out, we need to do this, doesn't change the substance of what's happening here. I get, this one, I have a friend. I have a friend who works at public health, and they send a bunch of samples in and they all test positive even though they're blank. First of all, I have a friend, no, you don't. If you did, you wouldn't be up at midnight trolling people on the internet, right? Saying things like that. "I have a friend" is the first sentence of every lie ever told. It's the same as, "I'm a Nigerian prince, can you give me your routing numbers for your checks?" Okay? If somebody starts something on social media with, "I have a friend," don't listen, just move on. Masks, right, we're gonna talk about masks a little bit, masks cause carbon dioxide poisoning. If that were true, every day across the world, doctors, nurses, factory workers, food service workers, paramedics would be dropping dead in the street, right? There's no reason to believe that that's true. There's no evidence to support it, okay? Causes immune deficiencies. That's like arguing, don't wash your hands because germs are good for you, they make you stronger. That's counterintuitive to every single progress public health has made in the last 1,000 years. This one's frustrating. Early on, we had a lot of conversations where people said, hey, if this is such a big deal, why aren't people dying? Why don't we see deaths? And we said, whoa, 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 it takes time for people to die, we need to get, before the people die. And then a bunch of people died, and then I have to have conversations about, well, that's too many people dying, you must be lying about it. And then we said, well, let's get it together, let's figure out what we're gonna do, we do it. We take the numbers down, and the numbers start coming back again, they say, well, not enough people are dying. We still don't have enough people dying, obviously, this is not, how many people is the right amount of people to die? Seriously, how many, what's the right amount that need to die for us to do something about this? I'd love to hear it, and then maybe we would. So what works? Hygiene, social distancing, staying home, taking it outside, everything we can do, try to do it outside, super successful, we're very fortunate. I think, my personal opinion is a lot of what's driving, not a lot, but some of what's driving, in the sun belt is, in the summer, we in Colorado go outside. In the summer, in Arizona and Florida and Texas, you go inside. So it's kind of reversed, now you're exposing people more than what you do. We see all of the north, the, the north Midwest is doing really, really well, we're good, and those are miserable places to live in the winter, they're wonderful places to live in the summer. And so I think that's also what's kind of driving in some of these areas. And then lastly, face coverings. And we're gonna spend the rest of the time talking about face coverings. And I realize this is not a medical conference, but we have a very smart group of county commissioners, many of which either have medical backgrounds or military backgrounds where they dealt with crisis response, and I think it's important that we're being transparent about what's actually out there. What is the evidence to support us asking you to wear a mask? That's a legitimate request from our community. So why not mask before? A lot have been made of, well, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't, you didn't ask for masks before, you know? You said no masks in March, now you're saying masks. The fabric of reality is unraveling, right? Here's why we didn't recommend masks in March. Should we have? Absolutely, we should have collectively, but why didn't we? Mask use is not practical, not valuable in settings where there's low viral transmission. Early on, we misunderstood, we did not anticipate, we underestimated the amount of virus that was already here in early March. And so if you don't think it's here, you're like, why would you do anything about it? It's not here yet. It was here, but it's kind of like wearing a mask in your car by yourself. There's no virus in there, you just kind of look silly driving around town, wearing a mask inside your vehicle. And that's kind of how we, the attitude we had was, well, it's not here yet, so there's no reason to do that. Due to testing lags and shortages, PPE was in short curriculism, I know that because I was one of the people that was in charge of distributing the PPE, finding out who had it and who didn't, and making sure that we could get it from their stores. So we were having direct conversations with hospitals about this, and this was, this was a big deal, particularly early on, it may become a big deal again. We had no early appreciation for asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic, that's number one. We just didn't know that, that this was the biggest driver of our infections, that we thought, if you're sick, stay home, if you're not sick, you're probably okay. Now, all infections have a little bit of that, influenza also, but not to the degree that we're seeing here, particularly the asymptomatic spreaders. Whereas the recent cultural historical presence, we hadn't done that in the United States for 100 years. Asia, other places, that's a part of their culture, that's how they handle pollution and other things. And then no relevant data concerning novel coronaviruses. This is important to remember, and this is hard for people, it's hard for me. Novel means new, it means we had never seen it before, which means we don't know what it's going to do and how it's going to act. When you graduate from science college, they don't give you a book that says Book of Science that has all the answers of anything that could ever happen. We didn't know and we had to figure it out. And that's how it works, right? As we learn, we adjust our plans accordingly, that's appropriate. Okay, so why masks now? Now we know about asymptomatic and symptomatic spreading as the main drivers. We have wide community, widespread, high viral loads in many communities, including ours. As we exit lockdowns, there's gonna be a natural tendency for these people to get together. We have to have other barriers in place because space and walls are not, are not gonna work forever. Surging cases of new transmissions in multiple states, obviously, this is what's putting the onus on the conversation we're having here today. And then the other biggest pieces, we've had now four months to help figure it out. We've got good research and data to support it, where we didn't have that before. All the studies we had were older, they weren't valuable, they weren't specific to these circumstances, so you have to use the latest data available to drive those decisions. Okay, so I'm gonna go through some of this briefly so that you know kind of what, what's driving some of these recommendations. One, the asymptomatic and pre-symptomatic spread, we've talked about it, the Diamond Princess cruise, the Seattle nursing home, which was our, our first of many long-term care facilities, in retrospect, were driven, those infections and hospitalizations were driven largely by asymptomatic and pre-symptomatic spread. All right, so we know, you can be infectious before you show symptoms, that's clear, we're moving on from that. Efficacy of mask-preventing onward transmission. If I am sick and I wear a mask, will it help you? Good studies early on show that in families, the attack rate, meaning the percentage of people that were gonna get sick if you had a family member, was almost 25%. If you put the, the person who ended up sick and all the other family members in masks, because they have high mask use there already, you can reduce infections by 79%, effective in those settings, if you're wearing it before the person gets sick. In Germany, there was a town that, that had early mask adoption, which showed over time a 40 to 60% reduction in the growth rate of their epidemic compared to controlled, similar density, similar size, other German towns, so effective in that community. And the USS Roosevelt, this is widely reported, they had about 25% of 4,200 crew members got, got sick. 60% of those onboard tested positive had symptoms. Face coverings were being worn by many, not all, and so those that wore face coverings, 81% did not develop symptoms, 56% of those who, who wore masks, so 81% who, face coverings were by 81% who didn't develop symptoms, and 56 of those who became infected. So it shows that there is effect in those groups. Now, if you're the kind of person that wears a mask, you're probably the kind of person that washes your hands and does all the other things that you're supposed to do, so it's not great data, but it does show some, some, some effect. We know that masks, even in aerosolized organisms like mycobacterium tuberculosis and pseudomonasauruginosis, have about 80 to 90% effective, so the, one of the arguments is, well, if it's aerosolized, what good is a mask use? Well, here's the illustration. One of my favorite studies of all time, certainly my most COVID favorite COVID one, was they took two hamsters, they put them in a glass box, they put a glass wall between the two hamsters so they couldn't interact with each other, so they couldn't have direct spread, no saliva could transfer between the two hamsters, but they shared the same air. So if it's aerosolized, it can pass from one hamster to the other. They infected one of the hamsters. Obviously, you can't put a mask on a hamster, although it would be adorable if you could. They put a mask over the cover where the air was coming back and forth. If they put the mask over it in the direction that you would be if the sick mouse were wearing the mask, they reduced the transmission from 67% of the other mouse got infected to 16.7%. You protected the other mouse, 75% reduction. If you took the mask and put it so that the, the well mouse was wearing it, you had a 33, only 33% of those mice, of those hamsters got sick, which is a 50% reduction, showing that even a simple paper mask has the ability to filter out the virus. Until the 1970s, all surgeons wore cloth masks, combat settings, urban trauma settings, surgical, all that stuff, that's what we had, that's what they wore. Study after study after study showed 90 to 95% effective for bacteria, even small particulate bacteria. That's how you kept oral secretions and things during surgery from, from getting on them, from, from infecting the surgical patients. Experimental testing. Now, what we can do is we can take the mask, we can put it on a dummy, blow air out of it, blow, blow fluid, all those kinds of things out. Even simple cloth masks you make at home, 90% reduction in forward transmission. A lot of people can't wear masks. They've got lung problems. They're in settings where it's not appropriate. They read lips. They, they're a teacher that's teaching foreign language or English as a second language or speech therapy. How about, how about, how about shields? Shields are actually more effective than masks at forward spread. Not as good at side or down, which makes sense, but they're a completely reasonable option for people who cannot wear a mask. Institute modeling data shows that by October, 180,000 Americans are going to die. We're at 130 to 40 right now. If everybody goes into mass, 95% across the country, 30% reduction based on known transmission rates, up to 1,000 deaths prevented in Colorado. Other modeling supports those same things. This is a study that went around a lot lately that is about finances. I'm not economist, but I, I, I think this may be the most compelling argument for mask use in existence currently. Goldman Sachs asked three questions. One, if you make a mandate, does it work? Does it actually get people to wear a mask? That's the question. So they looked at places that did and didn't have mandates, when they made mandates and whether it affected it. They started with a survey across the country. The U.S. were usually about 60 to 70% on average. Colorado is, is right there, right around 60%. Obviously vast variations across the country and you can see some of those states there. But when, they showed that when you did a mask mandate, you got about a 25 percentage point increase after 30 days of people who said they always or frequently wear masks. So it was a statistically significant difference. And here's the breakdown of that. The people who go from frequently go to always, the people who go from other categories to always, that's about a 40% jump. So the mask mandates do increase the number of people who use them. Great. Does that actually mean anything when you talk about transmission? Okay. So that was the next question. And they had various ways, three different ways that they kind of looked at that. The line there is where they put in the mandate. And then the next is the growth rates of the virus transmission based on case counts. And you can see very rapidly, there's, there's pretty significant decrease in the number, the amount of transition and their calculations show across the board. It's about a 1.3 percentage point decrease in the, in the growth rate, cutting infections by about 25% and deaths by about 2.4 percentage points. With increasing over time, people get used to it. The culture kind of changed and shifts and then, and then they wear them. And then the last question is, well, if we did a mask mandate and it worked, what could we avoid to make that, that would be beneficial? And they showed that to get the equivalent benefit of the mask mandate, and this is a federal mask mandate is what they were testing for. If you did, if you did that, what benefit would you get in transmission? And they said, okay, this is the amount that we get. Okay. Now, how much lockdown would we have to do to equilibrate that, to make that same impact? Because we do know that data because we've, we've unfortunately been through it. And they said, okay, well, how much of that lockdown, that same, to get that same effect, that level of lockdown, how much does that affect the economy? And then they went and they said, well, that's about 5% of the GDP. So a mask, universal mask, whether it's a mandate or whether you just get people to do it alters the trajectory equal to 5% of the gross domestic product, gross domestic product. Okay. So their conclusion, the financial conclusion, these are public health people. These are the people that manage all of our money, said, mask mandates or universal use are an effective means of reducing viral transmission and deaths while avoiding the negative economic impacts of a lockdown. And so essentially every single legitimate medical society, public health institution in every country in the world has come to the same conclusion. And that's that, one, asymptomatic spreaders are a big deal, asymptomatic or pre-symptomatic. Two, evidence continues to accrue that masks, including cloth masks, prevent onward transmission. Three, evidence is also accumulating that masks may additionally protect the wearer, right? Four, cumulative multifaceted evidence from modeling to laboratory to flow to historical to case studies in shopping malls and nail salons and everything, show that mask efficacy provides, provides strong support for their use. All of these multifaceted studies support that. And then that new evidence finds that even the use of clear plastic shields in those situations where it's not appropriate, it, it has significant positive benefits. Okay. So currently where are, this, this is a call, I'm not, I'm not here. I'm here to lay out the evidence. These are the facts, indisputable facts. Okay. You guys know from the beginning, public health perspective has been, we are working with our community. This is not a dictatorship. We're going to say what we think is the right thing to do, but ultimately we're making the decision with you, with our businesses, with our community. Our job is not to tell people what they shouldn't, shouldn't do. Our job is to give people the evidence to make good decisions. So that's not why we're here today. But what is at risk right now if current trends continue? Testing, tracing, virus control in lives. We are not on a path that's sustainable for any of those. Hospital capacity. We've heard from our hospitals today on where, how they feel about where we're going. Current variances are at risk. The opening of businesses, continuing success of our businesses, our employment and our local economy. These are the things that are going to be affected if we continue in the direction we're going. And this one's a big one for me. I spent the entire weekend writing the guidance to get schools open in person. To me, that's one of the most critical pieces of this. We cannot get going if we don't have kids in school and kids need to be in school because that's their best chance of being the most successful they can. Here's the reality. We're basing our decision on getting kids back in school on a bunch of other countries who have been very successful at doing that. We've seen minimal consequences, great outcomes, kids in school, minimal outbreaks. It's been phenomenal. That's what gives us hope that we can get our kids back in school this fall. Every one of those countries has done so in the setting of decreasing viral cases, decreasing hospitalizations, or flatlined of both of those. No country on earth has opened their schools in the setting of certain viruses, surging hospitalizations. Nobody's done that. But that's what we're about to do. We don't know what's going to happen. We're going to do our best. But here's the truth. I can write as many guidance to schools, tell them all this stuff that I want them to do. They can follow it to the letter. It won't make a bit of difference if you're sending kids from a community full of virus into those schools. We have got to take care of business in the community first, or we're asking our schools to do the impossible. So what are we going to do about it, right? We're, we're running out of options. We're running out of options here. We can do rollbacks and lockdowns. Successful, sucks. None of us want to do it. Our businesses sure don't want to do it. So what are we going to do in lieu of that? What we're going to do is we're going to follow the guidelines put in place by the CDC, by your local public health department, by your hospitals, by every single expert on earth who knows anything about this, those simple things that we talked about. Wash your hands, socially distant, limit contacts, stay outside and wear your mask. Surgeon general just said over the weekend, the U.S. could turn the rise of cases in two to three weeks, but that's based on whether we can get a critical mass of people wearing face coverings, practicing at least six feet of social distancing, doing the things that we know are effective. These are our only options left on the table. Okay. The greatest generation was born in the shadow of the First Great War. They grew up during the depression. They then went on to storm the beaches of Normandy and build the arsenal of democracy. They defeated the Nazis. They came home. They built the greatest economy in the world and for dessert, they defeated the Soviets in the Cold War. One generation did that. We're asking you to wear a mask. Wash your hands and stay six feet of each other. How many times do you get the opportunity as a regular citizen to save the world? Only in movies.
Do we have any questions for Dr. Kelly? Do we have anybody else that wants to speak on this matter? Director Whelan?
I just wanted to be present for any questions and thank you, Dr. Kelly. You can see that from a public health standpoint, we are extremely passionate about protecting the citizens in the role in which we all have a role to play in doing our part. And as I started out this presentation, this is a call to action to our community. We need to step it up and we need people to practice the prevention measures. It's not about one prevention measure. It's about all of them combined for us to maneuver through this pandemic.
Any comments from the board? Commissioner VanderWorf?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Dr. Kelly. And thank you, Susan, for giving this presentation this morning. Lots of data. You've got a lot of charts up here and it's really, really important to continue to see that data over and over and over again. That, that's critical so that our community can kind of understand what we've got. And I think there are compelling reasons here to, to really pay attention to what we want to do because we want our community to be successful. We want our businesses to stay open. We want our citizens to be healthy. We want to minimize the number of deaths. And, and so the data is important and that it gets out into public domain and that it is also presented, you know, to boards like this. So I, a couple of things that I have a strong interest in saying, I, I, I think I would also like to ask our community to do what they can to help us prevent the spread of the virus. Social distancing is critically important. In fact, if we had 100% social distancing, we would stop a virus dead cold, but we can never get to 100%. So we have a series of other things that we need to do and we are asking our community to do. Now, for me, it's still a voluntary approach to all of this, but I'm asking citizens to be part of this. And, you know, we have a lot of compliance. So this is really about levels of compliance going to a higher level. That's really important. And I think all of these done in concert together can continue to be effective. And I just ask that people do more. And we've heard it several times, the cleaning of hands, the staying home if you're sick, the wearing of masks, the complying with the variances, the different conditions that are in those variances, I think are important. And supporting voluntary contact tracing. If you're contacted, if you have a willingness to do so, please, please do so. And I do like the one additional point, take it outside. That's, I think, very important. It's safer outside than in a crowded indoor room. So those are, there's a whole bunch of behaviors that we can do, none of which completely deliver total effectiveness, but taken together really delivers a lot of value to our community. And I think those are important things for us to do. Dr. Kelly and, and to the Health Department team, I do have concerns about how the positivity rate is calculated, but I'll talk about that with you at a later time. It is not the numerator, the number of tests that are positive. It's fairly straightforward. It's how the denominator is calculated to get to a 5% number. I think there's a lot of potential for bias and variability in that that doesn't give you statistical answers, but let's talk about that at a different time. And I also want to mention, I think it's important, right? Because you, you kind of parsed out where we're seeing these increased rates by different age groups and things like that, right? So we had a very concerted program a couple of months ago to reduce the number of infections in older people. And by and large, not entirely, but by and large, that was effective. We, we really made progress in that. But now we have a larger number of younger people that are being infected. It seems appropriate to me for kind of a public communication, maybe a communications campaign of some type to, to ask those groups, the people that are in those age groups and others, to really work hard on behalf of the entire community about that. And it's possible we can parse that a little bit more because, you know, when I go to restaurants, and you're right, younger people provide a lot of the services in our service industries, you know, the people that are cooking the food and the, and the waiters and the waitresses and so forth, but, but not just that. But I have to say, I've seen a lot of compliance with the employees in those restaurants. So maybe parsing it out a little bit further, if that's really the issue, or if it's really the patrons of the restaurants that are the issue, I think it's important to kind of get that down as best as we can and then really start a communication with those folks in our community so that we can continue to move forward with this. So those are some comments that I have. If you wish to comment on those, that'd be awesome. Thank you.
Yeah, so yeah, good comments. The, the local mask use. Public health did a, a survey where we went out and just observed at one of our large, I think our large Walmart over a period of time and then calculated how many people were wearing masks. And it was about 60%. So that's good. It's about right on Colorado average. Most studies say you really need to get above 80 to 90% to really see the significant additional impacts. And so we've got people who aren't wearing them. That's the reality. They're not. And so what are we going to do to get them to wear them? You know, I agree with you. You can only ask people so many times. We don't ask people to not build a bonfire during a fire ban. We don't ask people to put on a life jacket when they're on a canoe on state property. We don't ask people to wear a seatbelt, right? Because we know that those things have benefits beyond just that person. They collectively help all of us. And so in many ways, it feels as if we're all adrift and science has thrown us a life, you know, a life preserver. Most of us are grabbing on, but a significant percentage are like, no, I'm not taking it. I'm going to drown and you're going, I'm going to drown you with me. And that's not acceptable. As far as the businesses goes, yeah, most of the data shows that if you make mandate in businesses of masks, you don't get any benefit. Why? Because businesses are already doing it, just like you said. They're going to do it before we even ask them to because it's their liability. It's their name on the billboard. It's their employees. It's their financial future. So they're going to do everything they can to keep it open. And that's what our businesses are, are asking us right now. So I agree. You know, as I mentioned, you know, our young people are the ones that are in those businesses. Much of the mask efficacy is on the person who's sick. So if you work at a business and you wear a mask, great, you're helping protect the people who come here, come there. But if you're going to pretend to be about small businesses and you're going to, you're going to, and I'm talking about you guys. I'm talking about a citizen out in the community. You're going to pretend to be about small business. You're going to pretend to be about the economy. You're going to be chinning about getting us moving forward, getting us open, doing all these things. Why would you walk in the door and do the one thing that has the highest likelihood of ruining that person's business, of sending an employee home for two weeks now because they're infectious? I have a good friend who's a personal trainer and he runs his own gym and.
I thought every lie started with, I have a good friend. No, I'm kidding. I apologize. I'm kidding.
Yeah, it was a good friend though, not just.
Okay, that's fair enough.
I'll bring him in next week. And he has a gym and he had some folk, a person come from out of town, came in, worked out. She comes down with symptoms the next day, gets tested positive. He's done, two weeks, 14 days, can't work. Most of the clientele are older people, retirees, trying to do well, take care of themselves. I haven't worked out with him since this whole thing started. But that's real money, right? That's real money, people's real lives, their real livelihood that you're putting at risk because you are choosing not to do the right thing. I don't know how, how we get beyond that. We've messaged that again and again and again and again. But take whatever it is that's the most important thing to you, whatever it is that you miss desperately that you want to get back, whether it's your kids in school or going to the movies like we talked about, and, and just ignore the rest of it. Ignore the noise and say, if, if this is what I got to do to get my kids back in school, then this is what I'm going to do. Because the rest of the strategies that we've tried, we're at our limits here. So I'm begging you, begging our citizens to please do this. Do this for whatever it is that is important to you. And please, because we're running out of options here. All right.
And I'll tell you from our perspective, this has been somewhat frustrating, right? I, I have a friend who was in Durango a couple of weekends ago, but I was with them and we were sitting out on a patio and Durango has a mandatory mask provision in place. And so we're, we're sitting on the patio in Durango, eating our meal and seeing all these people walk by. And so we just anecdotal data, completely anecdotal. We decided to count the number of people that were wearing masks versus the number of people who were not wearing masks in an area where it is mandated that you wear them, about 50/50. And so I, I got thinking about that, you know, and if I knew the city of Colorado Springs was considering an option of making that mandatory here. So, so what do you do? It's, you know, in a, in a vacuum, I completely agree with you, agree with you. We, we make people, we force citizens to do what they should do and everything's going to be great. Here's the problem. People aren't necessarily going to do it. So what do you do about it? How do you engage in the enforcement activities associated with implementing some sort of ban? And, and it's my position as a local elected leader that if, if, if you're not going to enforce it, and we're not, then it's, it's not worth doing. It's not something that should be done. I have a lot of constituents that come to me. In fact, the city of Colorado Springs, not the El Paso County Board of County Commissioners, but the city of Colorado Springs is considering a mask ban. Do you know how many emails I've gotten in the last two days saying, vote no on the mask ban? A thousand, maybe a few more than that? And not even something that we're considering, right? But when they, when they make their arguments, how can I reach back to them and say, you know what, you're right about that? I know you've said that people in the younger generation, a lot of younger folks are the ones that are testing positive now for COVID, they're resulting in a higher number of hospitalizations. I'd love to see the data that supports that that's because they're frontline workers, who are, by the way, wearing masks in their frontline organizations versus those that are going to protest, because then I'd at least have something to be able to take back to my constituents that say, you know what, they're not arresting people downtown, they're not citing people, they're not ticketing people downtown who aren't wearing masks, who are, by the way, engaging in criminal activity in numerous circumstances. We had a circumstance two weeks ago where people are laying on I-25, disrupting traffic, not allowing that to happen, no citations associated with that, but we want to put a mask order in place that requires people to be cited for not wearing a mask in public. How am I supposed to take that back to constituents and sell it to them that that's the right thing to do? Because in one circumstance, we're allowing people to engage in criminal activity, not citing them in any way, but we want to be able to cite them for not wearing a mask. I mean, I get it. I understand where you're coming from. Wear masks, okay? Great, people do that. Please do that. Go out and wear a mask. But what are we supposed to do? How are we supposed to handle? What am I supposed to tell to our sheriff? What am I supposed to tell to the police chief about being able to gauge enforcement in those activities to make sure it gets done correctly? I don't think there is anything that you can tell them. And I don't think that, it seems to me, in that circumstance, you know, it's, you know, it's kind of like, you know, you pass a bunch of gun control legislation, the only people that you're going to harm and hinder in passing a bunch of gun control legislation are law-abiding citizens. It seems to me this is a very similar sort of circumstance where you, you know, forces, it's only the law-abiding citizens that are going to have issues associated with doing it. And, you know, I would love to have more better understanding data to be able to take back to my constituents, but right now I don't have that. You're talking about hospitalizations earlier, and that's the one last thing I want to consider here. For two months, or maybe a month now, we've been talking about the number of cases going up and not one word, not one, has been said about hospitalizations because they remain low. You gave us a pretty good explanation of that today and I appreciate that. But today, today, this morning, is the very first time I have heard from one of our medical director, or one of our, one of the directors of our health organizations in our region regarding hospitalizations at all. Today's the very first day I've heard that from one of those. In fact, got an email from him, reached back and said, hey, I think we need to talk about this on the phone. But it makes it very difficult for us as local elected leaders who are being asked to make these decisions when we don't have the information. We still don't know what the threshold is for the number of hospitalizations in our region that triggers some sort of event moving forward because we hear that that's proprietary information and the hospitals don't want to give that up. I get that and understand that, but it then makes it impossible for us to make decisions. And so, you know, if we're in this together, if we're supposed to be working together, we got to have more better information before we're going to be out directing, you know, our, our law enforcement officials to engage in what I perceive as an impossibility. And respond if you'd like to, if you don't, that's fine, too.
Yeah, so, you know, the frustration that you experience is, is real. I can tell you, I have fielded numerous, numerous calls and emails and conversations from our local business leaders saying just the opposite, that we need the support here. And once again, I'm not here to tell you we need a mask mandate. I'm telling you, we need masks. However you guys think we can get that done, let's do it. But these are the facts. We can always say, I want to know more. We're in the middle of a pandemic. We would always like to know what's going to happen tomorrow, but we don't. We have to go with what we have now. And what we have now paints a very, very bleak picture of where we're going. This is our, this is our, this is our ghost of Christmas future moment here, that if, here where others have gone, if we don't act, there's nothing special about El Paso County or Colorado that's going to prevent us from being in that same place. I am not going to go out there and tell our businesses that they got to shut their doors, they got to lay off employees, they got to take money out of their pockets. If we haven't exhausted every conceivable option, is it hard? Yes. Is it ideal? No. But this is too hard to figure out isn't a strategy. That isn't an option here. We know where this is going if we don't do something. So we're here to ask you, what are you going to do about it? And I don't say it has to be a mask mandate. That's not at all what I'm saying. But what are the five of you going to do to help us stop what's happening right in front of our eyes? What is our city council going to do to help us? What is our mayor going to do? What is everyone in this room going to do? I don't know. It's too hard? It's all hard. Like, it's been hard from day one. You all know that. We've had difficult conversations. What are you going to do? What are you going to do to keep these businesses open? Because I'm not going to leave our best player on the bench, potentially, and then go to those businesses and go, sorry, it's too hard. Good luck. Because that's where we're headed.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, I think everybody's been working hard on this and we've been giving you everything we can. And we're asking people to wear the mask, you know, that's a constant. At the end of last week, we were totally talking, absolutely talking about doing a campaign to get the word out even more than we've been trying to do, because we've been trying to do that. But I want to, Blake, do you have that one slide I asked for? Give me the second one, number two, because I hear a lot of negativity. I get it. The numbers are going up. But, you know, when you say about what are we doing, these are the peaks from the three peaks of cases highest originally. And then you see the peak on the right. I did the math. And so what are we doing to help you? And you guys are doing the yoke's work, but this board and the community has been helping you out. So when you look at the cases, the high, I took the average of the three, and I'm not an expert, I'm an expert on data, okay? In my career, I'm an expert on data. I'm not a medical doctor, I have no, I'm not saying I know anything more than you guys do, I know much less, but I understand data. And the data here says, during the average of these peaks compared to back then to now, so the average per case, previous highs versus our recent high average, hospitalizations per cases, .157 versus the .055 on a three-day average. I went to the high point and went the day before, day and after, and I took it, I did the actual day and did a five-day to try to make this as best and equal in terms of data. Well, from then to here, those numbers resulted in hospitalizations at an average on the single day, almost eight times greater in the past. You took the three-day and the five-day, and it was three times greater in the past. So we reduced that, you've helped reduce that, the community has helped reduce that. If you look at deaths, .105 on the average per case versus on the single day, .008, three-day, .004, and five-day, .008. Compared to back then, that was 26 times the death rate than the high. And if you actually scroll to the right a little bit, you'll see the last several days it's actually come down on all those numbers. And even on the, no, to the, there you go. Thank you. And on the five-day and the one day, which gives you the lower number, still three times, thirteen, sorry, 13 times greater death rate. So that's what this board and the community has been giving you the resources and the dollars and everything we can, because I get it, this is hard. I care, everybody here cares, and we're trying, okay? But I do want to demonstrate that because there was a lot of negativity. We have been saving lives and this data here shows that. And so I am asking for people to do the masks. I'm asking that we support that. But I know, go back to an example here, in terms of, I didn't mean to talk about mandates, okay? But fireworks were illegal just the other week and I've never seen so many illegal fireworks utilized on the Fourth of July. And when we talked about, can you get the sheriff and the police department to take those, there was an article that said they were overwhelmed. And my guess is nobody got cited for illegal fireworks. So when you talk about mandates, that's one example there, and going back to demonstrate how difficult that is. We should be wearing masks. We support that, we recommend that. We're working our butts off. And I don't want anybody leaving here thinking the county commissioners are not working their butts off on behalf of this community. And I wanted to show this slide because that is the great work everybody's been doing, especially public health and the hospitals. But I think that's an example of what has been happening and what we have been doing. Thank you.
Yeah, and I agree appropriately. We have seen tremendous success in this community with how we've dealt with this. But so did California a month ago, so did Texas a month ago, so did Florida a month ago. They all looked great. We all looked great. It's human nature that if we see success, we tend to back off. And what we're here to, I'm not here to say that anybody up here, that us, that we didn't give it the old college try. We did. And we have avoided some of the political catastrophes that we've seen other communities, and that is entirely because of the five of you, because you helped hold this thing together and you kept some of the other stuff out of it, and that's why we've been successful, no doubt about it. And the math you did is 100% correct. We have younger people, less likely to get sick, less likely to go to the hospital, less likely to die. That's the goal. But once again, it's a simple math problem. Even if it's a smaller fraction, if there's large amounts of them, they still will show up at the hospital. And so what we are here to say is, what we are doing today is not as effective as what we were doing a month ago. We have lost some of the diligence, we can get it back, but we're doing that in the face of continuing to open things up. So not only do we have to do equal it in effort, we have to surpass it in effort. So what are we going to do to make that happen? If we're, part of this is, we've got all these news cameras right here, right? This is how we're communicating to our community, this is where we are, okay? And we can, you know, quabble about the metrics and how we should be calculating it and where we should put the thresholds and whether that math is what we would prefer, that's arguing about the score, honestly, because what we see happening is indisputable. It doesn't change the trajectory that we're on. So now is the moment, now is the moment where we double down on our, with our community about what we're going to do, because we don't want to move in the direction that we're moving. And this is the hardest thing any of us have ever done, okay? It does no good to pretend like it's not happening, it does no good to pretend like this is your fault, your fault, your fault. This is on all of us, right? And so we need to continue the efforts that we're having, but we need to increase them some way. And, you know, this is one day and we'll see you again in a week when we'll see where we are. We've got two weeks from a practical standpoint to show progress before we have to have another conversation, and then we have two weeks after that. So now is the moment to make the changes if we want to make them.
Yeah, let's get Susan and then, well, actually, why don't we do this? Commissioner Vanderwerf, then Williams, then Susan.
May I respond?
Yeah, sure.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Sure.
I want to make it extremely clear, you know, that there are no disconnects with the public. We started fighting this pandemic months ago in March. Every single commissioner on this board has been phenomenal. You all have been supporting the work that we're doing and we have been in lockstep together, moving down this path and the battle against the virus. So I don't want anything getting taken out of context as it relates to how we've been maneuvering. Commissioner Gonzalez, without the commissioner's support, and you serve also on the Board of Health, we would not be as successful as we are. We are not here today to say, you know, what are you going to do? It's about we, right? It's you, the public, it's everybody. It's not, you know, five people up here on the board. It's about the entire community, that the call to action is practice prevention measures. There are limited options, but that's all we have, the prevention measures, that's all we have right now. You know, and I hear anecdotal stories where there are people that are going into businesses and kind of taunting people that are wearing masks. Well, guess what? I want people to say thank you. That's what I want to see. And when we're asking, what is the call to action? We're still in this, we're still collaboratively working. So it's not like it just starts now. It's just like, how are we going to work together to kick it up? And I just wanted to make that extremely clear because I have a tremendous amount of respect for every single one of you on this board. We have been working seven days a week and we speak multiple times a day, every single one of you, whether it's me or my staff. So I wanted to make that clear, that we are very connected throughout this fight for the pandemic. So I didn't want any of that to give a chance to getting taken out of context. So hopefully that's clear.
Thank you.
Commissioner Vanderwerf.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Susan, that actually was a great point. It kind of encapsulated some comments that I was wanting to make here. Work together to kick it up. Yeah, work together to kick it up. I think that's very important. Stay the course and enhance the course, right? These are really critical. I have to tell you, you know, some of you know that I've done these angel flights where I've delivered emergency medical supplies to different rural areas in Colorado. In one of those cases, I decided to hang out in that community a little bit longer, go down to the downtown area and go to one of the restaurants. Now, this is on the Western Slope and a mask mandate was not there. And you know what I saw in the restaurant? All of the employees wearing masks, everybody, and I don't think I saw anybody that didn't do this, everybody going into and out of the restaurant was wearing a mask. When the restaurant got to 50% occupancy, they converted over to takeout only, and there was a park across the street that people could go eat their takeout. Now, inside the restaurant, the tables were separated, it was every other table that was open. People would go to that table, sit down, now to eat, they would remove their mask, but then before they took off again, they would put their mask on again. And if it wasn't 100%, that was at least 80 or 90%, kind of this percentage number, Dr. Kelly, that you're saying would be really awesome for us to work with, right? So I tell you, I believe, I really believe, we can make an ask to our community, and I think our community can respond. I think we're up to that. And it's a matter of, you know, we've been communicating a lot, right? But it's maybe work together and kick it up, just what, just what Susan said. I really believe that. And I also make mention, you know, it's kind of interesting to me, and perhaps it's circumstantial evidence, nothing that I can really verify, but in a few cases where I've gone downtown to go eat at a restaurant, my wife, in some cases that's with my wife and I, and some of these are places where younger folks visit frequently, I did not see 60% compliance. I saw a much lower number than that. So really, now it's just about communicating to the community, kicking it up, really talking, you know, frankly, with everybody. We've got to keep our businesses open, we've got to keep our community safe. We're just going to ask people to do more. As with Commissioner Gonzalez, I have reservations about the data and the statistics, but let's just not worry about that at the moment with regard to this conversation. Let's just ask the community to do more. And I think when we get, I think in some of those establishments that I've been in, if you could get them to 60% compliance, and it's not the employees, it's the patrons, we'll go in an exceptionally long way. So let's just ask everybody to just do more, and I think that'll really, really help. And again, I want to continue to have the conversation about the data because I do think there's some problems with how some of the data is collected, so thanks.
All right, yeah, and we, you're right. There's nothing the five of you are going to do, nothing that I'm going to do, nothing the Public Health Department's going to do that's going to move the needle on this thing. It comes down to every single person doing what they know they're supposed to do. That's it. We just need to be there to help them do that best that we can. But in the end, it's in their hands as it should be.
Commissioner Williams.
Thank you. So one of the objections that I had to the city's proposal was they hadn't clearly thought out the penalties for said proposal. It was 189 days in jail for the first instance. At $87 a day, that would have been $17,000 per person in jail. And frankly, I told some of my friends on city council, you're going to have to deposit that the day that they walk into jail. That was an unreasonable penalty. But I do understand your arguments that we need desperately to get our kids back into school. That is so important. And we've worked so hard. We got worship centers open, restaurants, the zoo. We didn't get the North Pole open, we didn't get the Cave of the Winds fully opened, but we worked really, really hard to get event centers open. And I can tell you, I spoke to one person who said, if we can't get open, it was a wedding event center, she would have had to declare bankruptcy and you would have had multiple brides losing their deposit because of that bankruptcy. And so this is very personal to a lot of people. I talked, you know, we've had protests, we've had people out pulling down monuments, these small businesses, the large businesses, they are monuments to people's lives. And so the one thing that I would ask more than anything is that individuals respect another person's right, it's their own business, it's their risk, it is their monument to their career, and if they ask you to wear a mask, to please wear a mask. But I think really the most important thing that we need to focus on here is getting our kids back in school. We've had an increase in the number of mental health visits our sheriff has had to make out to parents who are not getting along with out to parents who are not getting along with their kids at home. And so we have these four standards, and I wanted to say that, you know, Governor Polis is driving this bus. I've been through the state statutes. I've spent four hours in them. I've read every single statute related to this. We cannot get out of the four standards that he has set. We may disagree with them, but we have to get below the point zero five percent again so that we can continue to open up our businesses, which leads to final two questions, which would be, or a comment, Ms. Wieland, if we need to give you more advertising somehow, let's get that done. Let's figure out how we can do that. The second thing is, I have had some council members ask me if there is a way we could get, I would just like to see a regular update again on the stats. So I know we have the four stats, three I think we're okay on, but it's the point zero five percent we've been having a hard time with. And I know that just puts one more thing on you all, but maybe our media team or someone from our side of the offices could just say, this is where we're at today, or it's going to be published at four o'clock every day, and it's right on the very first page of your stat page, so that we know how we're doing on that one statistic, so that we can get our kids back in school. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comment. So the two main metrics that we're concerned about is the 5% positive rate. And that one is on the dashboard. It's one of them. That's the black line. The picture I showed, the slide I showed, is the exact screenshot of the dashboard. The other one is the over 100 cases per 100,000 over the 14 days. And so that one also is on there. So the two main metrics that we're using to drive that are on the dashboard. So to your point, every single citizen should be checking that every single day like we would if we were going into camping during fire danger, or if we lived on the ocean and we would be checking tides and storms and anything else. The success and failure in this is the number one driver of our local economic and our national success. I mean, we can see it every day when we check our retirement accounts, our investments. That's what's driving, what we do is how we're doing with this virus. So to your point also, these aren't just numbers on a table, you know? These are real-world ramifications to people's well-being, their financial future, all of that. We're, everything we're doing is for the things that you just talked about. Getting kids in school, getting businesses open, keeping businesses open. You know, they're looking to us for leadership on how we're going to get there, and that's what we're here to do.
Maybe if we have a daily weather report, we should ask our news media to do a daily virus.
I love that idea. I think that's fantastic.
There you go. All four of you are here.
Commissioner Berman.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, Susan began this entire presentation by saying something along the lines, how great would it be if we all worked together to fight the common enemy, which is the virus? And we have quite a few tools in our tool chest to do that with. You at the Health Department have handed us those with prevention measures, and at this point, proven prevention measures. And we, as public leaders, can, we can encourage our citizens to listen to what you all have been saying from the very beginning. You know, I think, I think that our founding fathers had it right over 200 years ago, and that our society runs best when free citizens control their own destinies and take personal responsibility. And I think we also, the society runs best when, in humility, we consider those around us and realize that we're each having a larger impact with our own personal decisions. And so as a county commissioner, I don't really want to be in the business of mandating behaviors. I can only encourage our citizens to do the right thing. And I have faith in this community to do that, to listen to the messages that have been said today. And I have faith in our community to continue to do the right thing, taking steps to protecting themselves, their friends and family, and our local economy, and realizing that that has an aggregate effect, and one that is far more impactful than many decisions that are made from right here. Just to realize that we all have the ability to make those decisions, and I would encourage our citizens to step up and do the right thing.
Commissioner Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll just give a real quick one, but as always, Commissioner Berman, very eloquent in really summarizing, I think, probably the position of a lot of us, so, you know, very supportive of, you know, let's support, let's have faith in our community. Let's support them. Let's get the, you know, the word out. Let's, you know, let's really encourage that voluntary mask support and the other social advocacy. And that's just one part, you know? Let's ask that they, you know, voluntarily join, work with all of us together to improve the situation. And then second, as well, as we've kind of talked about on other aspects, I do ask the community to look at all the information, though, because as was referenced earlier, really only one bit of information is not in the public in the last several weeks, whether it's federally or in the local papers, it's cases. And as we did demonstrate, there are some positives still in the other areas of data, where even though they're slightly going up, I think the community, the Public Health Department, and the hospitals have done a good job on supporting the other areas that need to be looked at. So I just ask everybody to look at the entirety of the data. And then again, you know, as was already mentioned by Commissioner Berman, let's, you know, let's have faith in our community, but let's encourage them, and let's get on the same page in terms of helping each other out and being good neighbors to each other. Thank you.
Director Wieland.
Thank you. I wanted to go back to something that Commissioner Williams had said, a call to action for the media as well. You all live in this community. How can you support us? You know, I see Bill and Mike, I mean, we've worked for years together, you know, over 20 years. I've been with the county, and we've been through one al virus together, where we had the action. And I remember very bad flu seasons, and we had daily updates, and we worked very close together. So it's a call to action, not only for us here, but the media is part of our community. So I would, you know, welcome them in the campaign. But we are, this is, you know, there has been a promotion campaign all along, and we need to kick that up. And then how do we incorporate all of our elected leaders to give that message? Because if you're modeling the way, you're wearing a mask, and you're demonstrating that behavior, then let's normalize that. Because what you said also is that whether we like it or not, where the standards are set, the governor has set those. They may not be perfect, but regardless, if we go over that 5% and we don't bring that down, if we don't bring our case counts below 100 per 100,000, we're in trouble. That's how we're being evaluated. That's how everyone is being evaluated in the state of Colorado, every single county. Unless there is a change, that's how we will continue to be evaluated. So I love all of the feedback and the positivity around, let's work together, who, you know, who is in your sphere of influence? What action can you take, not only on this board, but in the community as well? Because I do have faith in our community that we can step up and make a difference, and we can, you know, provide the information and monitor that as well as how we're doing. You know, the challenge is, is that, you know, there's a delay in reporting and such, and some with the data. But I think the message has been clear today that every single one of you had reiterated that you want to help out, you have been helping out, and we're going to do all we can. We'll reevaluate where we are, and the options are available always, and see what else could we do. But going back to Mark, or Commissioner Waller, I remember the news conference that we were at, March 13th, Friday, the 13th, one of the worst days, I think, for me in my career. Our first death, we had a news conference. You stood at that news conference, and you said, we are all in this together. And we have to be. And so going back to the start of the conversation, this is a call to action. This is serious.
Thank you. And thank you for the very detailed presentation and all the effort that Public Health is putting into making sure that our citizens are as safe as absolutely possible. And I know there are a lot of frustrations. You know, Dr. Kelly, I hear your frustrations, and I'm sure you heard mine as well, and Commissioner Gonzalez, and, you know, other folks, and we hear them from throughout the community. You know, sometimes making the sausage is hard. It is. But that doesn't mean that, that doesn't mean that none of us want to do the right thing, because we all want to do the right thing. We are all in this to try to make decisions that best impact our community. But sometimes that's hard to do, because, you know, we're making decisions with less than complete information. And we don't like doing that. You know, we like to have as much as we possibly can have to be able to make the best kind of decision we can moving forward. Now, the reality is, sometimes you just don't get that. And this is one of those circumstances. There isn't complete information to have. But, you know, you do the best you can with what you got, and then you move forward. And I think that that's where we are, and that's where we've been. Sometimes it gets frustrating, because, you know, it feels like from the state, it feels like the goalposts move, from, even from an epidemiological perspective, and how the spread works. It feels like as we learn things, the goalposts move. Now, that's not because anybody's trying to move the goalposts, that's just because we're learning and understanding and knowing more about it. You know, for example, early on, I remember, we talked a whole lot about surfaces and how, you know, how contagious surfaces could be, and now that seems to not be as much of an issue. And now it's more about the spread through the airborne particles. And, you know, and early on, we talked about the not, as you stated earlier, the not wearing masks, and now how much more important that is. So, you know, we're, again, we're all, we're doing our best. We're trying to be as effective as we can, because there isn't one of us up here, not one, and I'm going to speak for all five of us. Shoot, I'm going to speak for the city council, too. You know, any elected leader in our state, there isn't anybody that wants to see more people dying from COVID. Nobody. Nobody wants to see that happen. But at the same time, we all want to measure that, you know, measure what we're doing to protect the citizens against also protecting their freedoms and protecting life as we know it in our community. And, you know, and quite frankly, in some circumstances, that's been difficult, and it's hard to do. Doesn't mean we're going to shy away from the responsibility moving forward. We're going to continue making the absolute best decisions we can make with the best information that we can get. It's hard, and it's difficult, but that's where we are, and that's where we're going to go in the future. With that, we're going to stand in recess.